Please. My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Burman County Commission meeting in November 22nd. All commissioners are present, so approval amendments from previous meeting.
We have to listen for the minutes from that previous meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Come in, Eric. Maybe I will, maybe I won't. How's Eric tomorrow?
All right, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Well, you know.
It'll be pretty quick and short. As you see, sidewalk projects moving forward. Had to go a little deeper than we'd originally planned to get down to a solid sub base, but we're there and we'll be getting it formed up and gonna try and make a pour this week. It all just depends on how everything goes, goes today, so.
Good.
But anyhow, moving forward with that project. Bean pad, worked on it, getting down to the final stages of getting it built. Did have a meeting with representative for ADM. They came over to look at our area, so we're waiting to hear back on that, how the visit went and how, whether it met their standards and specifications, so.
I bet if it meets KDHE, it should meet their standards.
Aye. I, I agree, 100 percent. Did have a accident yesterday. I do want to be upfront on that. We had a dump truck go over on its side, dropped a rear wheel off the edge of the road and overcorrected and laid it over on the, on its side. Operator was unhurt, so that's a great thing. And we set the truck back up ourselves and were able, once we added fluids back to it, were able to drive it off. A little bit of cosmetic damage, but we're gonna be able to move forward and, and not have to.
Do anything?
Do anything.
Well, that's good.
I think we gotta replace a door, so.
Yeah.
So, but anyhow, very lucky, very fortunate, so. Anyhow, anything for me right now?
I don't have any.
I, I need an executive session, but I don't know. Hey, Justin? Justin?
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
I need to call for executive, possible land.
Acquisition.
And then what was the other one on this, this subject here, and I'm not sure how.
That would be litigation.
Litigation?
And you have to go into two separate ones, so the first one will have to be for the acquisition of real property, and then you'll have to go in for possible litigation.
Okay.
Okay, how long, Eric, on the land deal?
Five minutes, it's fine.
Make a motion, go executive session, KSA 754319B6 for preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. Three commissioners, Eric Bailey.
Dustin.
Dustin Hall.
Yes, and Justin Meeks.
And Justin Meeks, be for five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, we'll leave this room, we'll return at 9:09.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And you're the only one here today?
I am the only one here today.
Well, I don't get, I don't like, I don't wanna yell, you don't wanna yell at other people.
Well.
Still, I just.
Um. No, yeah, I'm gonna go executive session.
How do you do that?
Just do executive session.
That's why I get so upset when they talk about doing away with them.
Actually, no.
That it, Eric?
Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have. Do you have any?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Approval of counts payable, that's already been done. Section 1 handbook, discussion of approval. Justin?
Yes.
This approval, section 1, did you see anything wrong with us approving for the handbook?
No, no issues.
Okay, no issues?
That's an easy section.
I would say either you would need to adopt a vision or mission statement, or it needs to be edited to take those references out.
Needs to be edited to take the references out, that's what the commissioners have decided on, so.
I mean, that's the only thing I saw when looking at it, is if you go that route, that those would need to be taken out.
Yeah.
If a mission statement could change every election, definitely.
Yeah, just get rid of it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'd like to have our executive session talking about non-elected personnel, 15 minutes, please.
Make a motion to go, executive session, KSA 754319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-resident personnel protected privacy, job performance, who do you want in there?
Three commissioners and Justin.
Be three commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for 15 minutes, we'll return at 9:38.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Justin Meeks.
Before Justin on the handbook, Susan had emailed, and I thought it was the original, I didn't realize it was corrected, so this copy, she's already updated to take the references to the vision or mission statement out.
Cool.
So it's ready, if you want to.
Good to go. Let's approve it. Okay, I make a motion to approve the section one, the employee policy procedural handbook, just welcome to Bourbon County, just so everybody kind of knows, welcome to Bourbon County, section 1.1, Bourbon County history, purpose, what you can expect from Bourbon County, what Bourbon County expects from you, open communication, employment references, notices, actually, I'm going to have a little discussion on this.
Okay.
When you ask for it.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a little bit of concern, not that this is a huge issue, but somewhere, some of this history I don't agree with.
What page?
Or, maybe it's, maybe it might be out of here, okay, native, I mean, this is really dumb of me, I get, but it's 638 square miles with open prairie comprising 90% of the area.
Yeah, not anymore.
That's not true.
Not anymore.
And then, the native forests comprise the remaining 10% of the timber belts, contain hackberry, hickory, oak, pecan, and walnut trees, I mean, it's, like I said, it's really dumb, I guess it's really not that big a deal, but, but if we're going to be true, we need to be, I mean, if we're, I mean, we need to be correct, and those are not correct statements, in my opinion.
I don't know where.
I don't know where they came from, but.
I don't need, really think our handbook needs to mention national forests.
I don't either, I don't either.
Well, with 20, like, when my dad was a kid, there were no trees everywhere, it was mostly open prairies, I just need to be updated, right now it's brush everywhere.
That's not fair today, it's, you know, we have, we have, you know, say, jorge, or whatever you want to call it, hedge trees everywhere, we, you know, there's, anyway, I just think that section, truthfully, needs to be out of there, why is it even in there, not like Jim says, it doesn't even need to be in there, so.
You can redact that section, just take it out.
So, so as, as part of my motion, I'm going to, I'm going to request that that section be redacted, I'll do it here.
And review it again after it's removed.
Or, do we just go on and go ahead without that?
I would say if you make a motion to approve it without that, we'll get it out and it should be fine.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to, by part of my motion, to remove that, because it's not right, anyway, that's my discussion, so now we can.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry about that, I just, it's.
Makes sense.
It's not, if it's not correct, it doesn't need to be in our handbook.
Can I have that copy?
You can.
Mr. Meeks, you're up, sir.
I have a couple things that, I really don't want to go into executive session, but I'm trying to figure out a way to talk about this without going into executive session, so, basically, there's a couple things I'm trying to follow up with, with the transfer of the hospital, we got to do some Estopples, we need to work on some licensing, we're going to be working on title insurance, so those things should be done here shortly, there was, I was contacted by an attorney yesterday with regards to assignment of lease, and that's probably what I need to go into executive session for, but literally three minutes, it's contractual, we can come out and have action on it, and we can talk about it once you guys decide if you want to do that or not, and I, then I would have to also call legal counsel for, people have taken the hospital and go from there too, so I'd have to call Troy and get his permission also, so I probably do need to go in for three minutes, I don't want to, but, I don't, I can't talk, because if you guys say no, then I, I don't want to get my license punched.
Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 7540 through 19B2, a consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with dealing with contracts and leases.
Lease assignments.
Be for three minutes, we will return here at 9:47.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session, just with action, I guess.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye, just, Justin, you have permission to, to do the leases that we're really no longer a part of.
Okay.
I mean, to, to finish up.
One lease assignment, we still.
To finish up a little bit of lease assignment, just some paperwork, convenient, anyway.
It's between Ascension and.
Yeah.
Yep.
With Ascension Hospital. Via Crystal.
I need a second.
I mean, do we need to make a motion for that?
I would.
That's a motion.
All right, I second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
I want to talk about 201 South Crawford, real quickly, it's the house behind the old SRS building, we're working on the deeds now, they should be done hopefully next week, and that will be transferred into the county, obviously, it's, I've, I've been in it, looked at it, there's, it's bad, so I think we just need to scrape it and get on down the road, I'll have to, with your permission, I'll talk to Eric to get, kind of maybe get in his queue to get that ready to be torn down, I mean, obviously, the city's grateful for, or the land bank is grateful for the scrape, I mean, it saves everybody money, so.
It's a great thing.
And we'll, we'll start looking at maybe a pocket park slash parking lot, or whatever you guys want to do with it, but.
Well, I think we talked a long time ago about that location, about, you know, paving it, or whatever we could do, or concrete, I mean, we obviously got people that can do concrete now.
Right.
And putting a basketball goal up, or maybe a tennis board where they can, you know, kids in the area can do that, plus it'd be parking, I mean, that's what we talked about two years ago.
Give those kids a place to go.
So, let's move on down the road.
Yeah, so, we're going to probably get that in queue and probably maybe use that in the spring, depending on what the cost is, I do want to talk about the land bank meeting last night, just a little bit, to kind of do some clarification, there was quite a bit of discussion about an employee, you know, hiring someone that's going to be a shared services, and the shared services, I think the land bank understood that the person that they hire is going to have to help with the tax sale and also help with the land bank, I think that they understood that, and that's where the shared service comes in play, so, there's lap, there's, you know, a lot of overlap with a person that helps with the tax sale. An employee, you know, hiring someone that's gonna be a shared services, and the shared services, I think the land bank understood that the person that they hire is gonna have to help with the tax sale and also help with the land bank, I think that they understood that, and that's where the shared service comes in play, so, there's lap, there's, you know, a lot of overlap with a person that helps with the tax sale and also does the land bank, and I think that that was vetted pretty well. They're, they're requesting at this time that the county supply this employee an office space, and obviously, I have, my office could be shared, I have no issues with that, I mean, depending on who they hire, you know, we'll go down that path when we get there, but I think that's a good idea, I mean, I'm obviously asking the commissioners to allow for that office to be used by this, by this employee, that is gonna be a land bank employee, it won't be a county. Won't be a county or a city employee, but just, you know, in, you know, giving them that ability to have that workspace, and then also be close to Laura Holdridge's office, because there'll be a lot of running back and forth and working on deeds and doing abstracts and things like that, so, I hope you guys will approve that at some point, I just wanted to give you a heads up, it probably is gonna happen sooner than later, I think they're gonna open it, open the position up here in the next five, five to seven days, and hopefully we have somebody that'll come in and apply for that job that's qualified.
Wanted to prove today, or the space?
I probably, probably, being based off the holidays and everything, I think they're gonna actually open it up.
About this office here?
Yeah, it's, it'd just be a shared office with myself and the land bank manager.
I make a motion to allow Justin and the land bank employee contract with the landlord, not a city or county employee, to share this office with our county counselor, Justin Meeks.
Second.
And any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And I want to, I want to vet this just a little bit more, you know, this is an experiment, if it, we'll give it a year, I think they kind of felt the same way, we'll give it a year, it'll be performance-based, and we'll see how it goes, if it doesn't work, we can come back and.
Well, it's really, it's starting to get, things are looking up, but we have another law that a person wants to purchase and build a house on, they've made that commitment, so that's a big plus.
Right.
From where we started, so.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to, not necessarily the 2023 tax sale, I mean, if I'm still gainfully employed, I'm looking forward to 2024. Because I think that's when we're gonna see the compression, I hope.
And we, we have another one, I'm not gonna say the location, but it's a hundred-foot log, people are looking, interested in building on it as well, so, this is what it's all about, getting rid of them old shanties and building new houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, and it was really loud and hard to hear at times with the last visioning meeting, but I think one of the three groups, when it comes to the, how to get residential homes built, I think they have a really good game plan, so hopefully we'll see some fruit from that too. So that's just kind of a, I think the housing thing is gonna start.
Yeah.
Taking care of itself, I hope.
And I'm gonna talk about that a little bit in my time, too.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna, hey. Thanks, commissioners, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Shane Walker. Have anything? Okay. Public comment. Bro. Okay.
I, I, I had conversations with folks while you were in executive session.
That was helpful, good.
That was helpful.
Good. Okay. Commission comments.
No. Nope.
I'm gonna propose, and I guess one commissioner can attend, or all three commissioners, hopefully all three commissioners, in January, I'd like to hold a town hall meeting. Possibly at the River Room, if we can get it because of the size, again, I hope a lot of people show up, I did in the last one, but one of the topics I'm gonna discuss is housing, what the county, and I'm gonna invite the city commissioners, what the city commissioner, what we can do together to spur housing, I'm gonna invite some of the people that's, was on that committee up there, that's working on incentives for contractors to build houses, I just want a joint meeting, everyone involved, and I want the public there, because we want their input, so there's a lot of things that we can discuss for building houses, every meeting I go to, and I know the con, the real estate people tell me the same thing, houses, they need houses, they need houses, and no one's doing anything about it, so, I think we've got to take the initiative to get things going, hopefully, and maybe we can come up some ideals and incentives, working with that other group and the city commissioners to spur some growth, so, I think it's our responsibility to sit down and talk about it, and see if we can make something happen, so, it's all right, the other two commissioners, maybe, of course, you don't want to come, I can go as a citizen, but I really want to do this, but I'd really want all three commissioners representing the county, I think it's very important, but I think it was time we sit down and just talk about it, we, you know, the results might be the same, but we've got to talk about it with the city and contractors and real estate people, so, I'd like to hold that sometime in January, that's all right, you two.
Yep.
Okay, all good, it's set up?
Yep.
We can have other topics too, if people want to talk about it, so, anyway, go ahead, but I'm done.
I don't know if we made a motion to, for all three of us to meet today, but.
I think so.
Yeah, I don't know if we made one last.
I think we did.
Did we make one last week, or no, I don't remember?
Let's do it again.
I make a motion to allow us to meet with the city commissioners today, all three of us will be in the same room, it will be an open meeting, I mean, the public can attend, it'll be at 12 o'clock at.
Emperor Center.
Emperor Center.
And there'll be no action.
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably, I mean, there'll be county and city business talked about, but there won't be any action by us taking.
I sent an agenda out this morning, it said there would be meeting, there would be multiple topics discussed.
Okay, perfect.
I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Brian, anything? Want to talk about, tell us how good U234 is?
The only thing I might mention is we have that flood plane, November 30th, 2 to 6:30, we'll be here at the hospital in the McCauley room, and I'll be, I'm gonna constantly send out more messages on Facebook.
Brian, would you, you come up and say that, so that people at YouTube, sorry, can, are aware of that.
I should know that, anyway, November 30th, from 2 to 6:30 at the hospital in the McCauley room, they're gonna come in, they're redoing the flood plane maps for Bourbon County, this is something they do every so many years, technology has gotten better, and so, anybody who's concerned about their property, I did send out letters to anyone whose property was affected, and that allows them to come in and speak to them one-on-one, get the facts, and then if, you know, they can, I'm sure they can dispute it, and there are things they can go by and do, but, that, like I said, I'll be putting out more notices on Facebook, I want people to know, you know, you're welcome to come, whether you're on the flood plane or not.
And, and I, I mean, please make it clear, Brian, this is not us.
No, no, it's not us, and you know, well, and, you know, I put my name on the letter when it went out.
Right, 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 but I mean, you, you know.
But I mean, it's, and, it is, it's FEMA.
Yeah, it's federal.
And it's the state of Kansas, and that's why we're doing this, so you can come talk to them.
Yeah, yeah, we as commissioners don't have control over flood.
No, I mean, we got, essentially, we, Ashley knows, we, we got an email from them, said, hey, we're coming, and we had a meeting with them, and they showed us their preliminaries, and there was a couple of places I immediately had concerns, but, you know, I lost my house in floods, so I, you know, I'm like, there's a couple of places they say are, that should be in the flood plane, I disagree with, and there's a couple that they say are in that I disagree with, so, but yes, it is federal and state, it is not us.
Let me say, I avoid Facebook, I did get on there, look at your announcement, and I was surprised at sarcasm that people put on there about your announcement, trying to help people.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay, and the other thing I want to point out on that is those announcements that I put on there, those are pre-written by the state, so if it seems hokey, it's not me. Because some of the ones that are coming up, I'm like, really?
But you're trying to help people.
Yes, that's the whole thing, and, and I've had some people reach out to me, and, and both in and out, and, you know, I'll do anything I can to help them, because I know flood insurance sucks.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but anyway, anybody who's even remotely thinks they're close should come.
Yeah. It's important.
It is.
It's not going away.
It's not going away.
Of course, it might have never rained, but, it may never rain again, we don't have to worry about it, but, you know. You know, it's amazing, and you all do, you can drive across country, I go across the bridge that spanned 400 feet, you can tell there hasn't been no water there since Moses, probably, and still they have this large bridge they're maintaining, I thought, wow, it's all, but it's everywhere, every.
It's everywhere. Except maybe New York, when everything melts, I think they'll probably have water again.
Is there something in places?
Anyway, that's all I got, just a reminder on that.
Ashley, anything?
Has there been any more thought to the emergency management? I've been asked.
We haven't been told anything.
What do you mean?
What are you talking about?
You're talking about the, yeah, but.
Emergency management position.
Like the part-time deal, making it part-time or not.
Well, we haven't, I haven't received any notice anybody's quitting, retiring or anything, so.
I mean, that's, there's been discussion he was going to, that's what I came.
Shouldn't he tell his bosses? Shouldn't he tell his bosses? Nope, I hope Justin say no, am I, whatever.
No idea what you're talking about, Ashley, thanks though.
Thank you.
Because of that position, it'd be identifiable, not allowed to personnel, I don't know if that person's even, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we, we don't know anything either, so, so I make a, yeah, anyway.
Guess whoever decides you might invite us. Not meant to sarcasm.
He's, he is not throwing you under the bus, he is being sarcastic.
No, I'm just, I'm just joining the crowd on Facebook. Anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well. I don't have any comment.
I have zero comments.
Every time I comment, Justin comes around the corner like this, so, I'm not gonna say anything either, so, okay, folks, do a adjourn.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye. We got two.